Arlington ISD's Board of Trustees Meeting on February 8th, 2022 is in the books, and I want to give you a few board briefs. We covered a lot in this meeting, and here are some of the highlights. The biggest news to come out of this meeting is that we approved universal pre-K. Starting next school year, Arlington ISD will offer free full-day pre-K for all four-year-olds. There will be no eligibility requirements or tuition for anyone. Look for more details coming soon. We also approved the sale of nearly $197 million in bonds, as authorized by the 2019 bond package. We do this each year during the five-year 2019 bond program, so this is the third sale of five. By the end of the fifth, we'll have sold all the bonds in the 2019 bond package for a total of $966 million. The proceeds from this sale will be used for construction, safety, security, and technology improvements, fine arts equipment and uniforms, and to buy buses and service vehicles. The Board also approved a revised schedule for early voting for the upcoming Board of Trustees election on May 7th, 2022. Two of the seats on our school board are up for election for three-year terms. In addition to approving those and other items, we also heard several updates from senior members of Arlington ISD's staff. One update provided the Board with a progress report on how our students are doing with end-of-course STAR retest. This pertains to legislation from the state of Texas, House Bill 3, that requires all districts to develop goals and plans to improve in a number of assessment areas. Those are just a few of the highlights. If you want more details on any of those or other items I didn't cover, you can watch the entire school board meeting. Just visit our Board Meetings webpage for a link at aisd.net. Until our next board meeting on February 17th, thank you.
At this time, I will reconvene into open session this called meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for February 8th, 2022, beginning at 6:59 p.m. Due to health and safety concerns related to the COVID-19 coronavirus, members of the public are encouraged to participate by watching the school board meeting online at www.aisd.net. One or more trustee may participate in this meeting via video conference call. A quorum of the Board of Trustees will be physically present at the administration building. Members of the public may access this meeting via AISD website at www.aisd.net. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Our board meetings are open to the public, and we welcome everyone, and thank you for participating in public education. While our meetings are open to the public, this is a meeting, and we have business to conduct. Disruptions will not be permitted. Anyone who disrupts the meeting or speaks when others are speaking may be asked to leave or be escorted out by the security attending the meeting. We welcome civic input, but we insist that we remain respectful and civil. Thank you for your cooperation. We will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Mr. David Willbanks in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to avoid any disruptions to those around you, and now if you would please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. So the first item on our agenda this evening is administrative ratifications and appointments. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mason. This evening, I'd like to recommend that the Board ratify the appointment of the individual discussed in closed session for associate principal for Sam Houston High School, assistant principal for Crow leadership academy, and assistant principal for Pope Elementary.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve administrative ratifications as discussed in executive session?
I'll make the motion.
My second.
Okay, Mrs. Fowler, the motion. Mr. Willbanks with a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All present vote in the affirmative. Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you, President Mason. Like to introduce or announce the associate principal for Sam Houston High School, Travis Anemek. And you should see Travis's information come up on the screen. He is a graduate of Texas A&amp;M University. It's the only reason I do that.
It's a good reason, bud.
And a master of Ed from Texas A&amp;M University in curriculum and instruction. You see his experience, most recently the dean of instruction at Sam Houston High School, and has a variety of experience. Congratulations to Travis Anemek as the associate principal. Next, the assistant principal for Crow Leadership Academy, Angela Robinson. Angela attended Southwest Texas State University for Bachelor of Science in Interdisciplinary Studies, and UT San Antonio for Master of Arts in Ed Leadership. Most recently has worked in Northside ISD as a principal, and you see her variety of experiences there, and in San Antonio ISD as well, so congratulations to Angela. Next, Melissa Garcia, assistant principal at Pope Elementary. Melissa attended Evangel University in Bachelor of Science in Psychology, Dallas Baptist for her counseling masters, and UT Arlington for Master of Ed in Ed Leadership. Most recently, the dean of instruction at Thornton Elementary, and you see her variety of experiences there as well, so congratulations to Melissa and the other candidates.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cavassos, and yes, congratulations. Now we come to our open forum for agenda items. As stated on the posted agenda, members of the public who desire to address the Board regarding an item on this agenda are required to register at www.aisd.net/BoardMeetingSpeakersRequest. No later than 3:00 p.m. the day of the board meeting. Mrs. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the Board on agenda items?
Yes, ma'am, we have one registered requestor, Ms. Calaluka.
Okay. So, welcome, Ms. Calaluka. This is a routine part of the school board's agenda for regularly scheduled meetings. This segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to share their views with the trustees on items that are on the agenda tonight. It is not intended to be a discussion or a debate, and trustees will not reply to the speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. Personnel matters are not appropriate subjects for open forum. You will have two minutes to speak, and Mrs. Benjamin will notify you when your time is up, and please end your presentation at that time.
I'll talk fast.
You may start.
All right. Good evening, everyone. As a UEA campus representative for my school, I try to walk through the building and say hi to teachers frequently. I want them to feel comfortable coming to me if they need help. I'm distressed by the amount of teachers who are contemplating, if not outright planning, leaving the profession. These are not people who are just trying out teaching. These are people who are passionate about teaching. They're not just older teachers who are close to retirement. There are also young teachers who should be at the beginning of their careers. Many of the middle-ground teachers would also leave if they could find a way to pay the bills and keep their retirement going. I've been pointing to articles showing how colleges are closing their education departments due to lack of interest, and I am scared for our students. The pandemic has put us in a place where most of our students are far behind where the curriculum says they should be. Not only do they need dedicated classroom teachers, but they need dedicated student-support interventionists for kindergarten through second, in addition to the ones we have for third through sixth on every campus. It would be amazing if we could restructure the classes so students attend based on their academic needs rather than their ages. We won't have enough teachers to fill the classrooms, much less support teachers if we don't have something soon. We're gonna take, we need to take away all meetings, trainings, coachings, et cetera, and give the teachers the time they need to plan and use formative assessments to guide their teaching. Give them the time to navigate the mountains of resources that you have compiled for us, and to plan engaging, rigorous lessons at the correct levels for our students. Count the hours they spend doing these things as professional development and exchange time. Restructure positions so that the coaches and trainers are supporting the students, not adding to the teachers' workloads. If the teachers are allowed to focus on the students and the teaching, they'll stay. If the students are supported and allowed to focus on learning, they'll learn, and the data will follow. Thank you.
Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mason. First action item is the consideration for bond sales, and so we have a presentation that Darla will introduce for us, Ms. Moss, related to our bond sales. Ms. Moss, and introduce our friends. We call them guests, but we'll call them friends tonight, so go ahead, Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos, President Mays, trustees. Tonight, we're asking for your approval of an order authorizing a refunding and issuance of Bond Series 2022 or Phase 3 of the $966 million bond package that was approved by the voters in 2019. Our bond counsel, Mr. Dan Culver of McCall Park Hurston Horton is here for any questions that you may have for him, and the district's financial advisor, George Wiliford, who is the regional managing director for Hilltop Securities is here, and he'll share a brief presentation for you and answer any questions about tomorrow's scheduled pricing.
Ms. Mays and Dr. Cavassos, members of the Board, it's a pleasure to be back. You'll recall, we came before you at the December meeting to kind of lay the groundwork for all this, and if you'll also recall, the timing was such that the plan was to have priced the bond issue last Wednesday so that it could be approved at the regular board meeting on Thursday. Well, with the weather and the fact that you were unable to convene, it also meant that we couldn't price bonds on Wednesday because there wasn't, wouldn't be the opportunity to get the required approvals and so on. So Darla can attest, I was down at Midwinter where Dr. Cavassos was, and we were on the phone for about a day and a half trying to discuss the alternatives and so on, and one would have been to have tried to price Monday of this week. Typically like to price the day before it has to be approved at the governing body so that everything can be finalized, and with the market being like it is and doing what it has with interest rates moving and so on, we just didn't have the comfort factor of trying to force the underwriters to go out early Monday morning after a weekend of who knows, you know, what might have happened in the markets. And so it's a little bit different, the action that you have before you, but it's not different than anything AISD has ever done. It's a parameter order with delegated pricing authority, and Mr. Culver can explain or answer any questions additionally, but essentially, the Board is establishing parameters tied to everything we've structured and so on, but delegating to the Board President and the superintendent or chief financial officer the ability after pricing occurs, and we're planning for that to be tomorrow. But if, say, there was any reason it couldn't, this also gives the flexibility that pricing can be deferred without having to come back to the Board and tie directly to a board meeting and so on. But the district, I went back and checked, on refunding issues, you've done a parameter delegated type pricing in '09, '14, '16, and even as recent as 2020. It's just, the district's never done it on new money, but as I explained to Darla, a lot of the larger issuers that are eligible in the state and larger school districts now have kind of moved to that's become more the routine is to do the parameter pricing because it is just more flexible and facilitates things and so on. So at any rate, that's the action tomorrow, or tonight before you, and then what we hope will be planned tomorrow. We included information, this is different than what we had presented in December from the standpoint that we already met with the rating agencies. S&amp;P and Moody's both affirmed the underlying ratings of AA and AA1 respectively, and we have the permanent school fund guarantees, so that means the bonds will be sold with a AAA rating. And then we included the pages from the official statement, or the preliminary official statement. This is the schedule with respect to the new money by purpose, similar to what you saw again in December. The change is that then we were having to add cushion because we didn't know what interest rates might do, and it was 3.3 some odd percent effective rate. You'll notice up at the top, this is showing about a 2.8 percent, and as it stands, we had a call this afternoon, underwriters, Darla was on, and so on. It looks like that the effective rate for the overall issue will be right in line with that, so that's what we're hoping. And then we've got projected savings from the refunding. This is more definitive from the standpoint that in December, we didn't know how much cash might be contributed, so we were just saying if it were $5 million. In this case, using $5 million enhances the annual savings projected to well over $500,000 per year, and from a present value standpoint, you can see 13.2 percent down at the bottom of the refunded amount. That's a very attractive, very lucrative savings level. And then this shows the two issues that are in fact being refunded. I believe that's all the pages I'd sent, but I know you should have gotten a hard copy that had copies of the rating reports and all. One thing I wanted to point out is we've got a graph and then a chart of historical index rates, the bond buyer index, going back, I believe, 10 years. And even though we're saying, well, interest rates have crept up since January 1, or even over the last couple of weeks since we've gotten into February, if you look back historically, we're still at a very, very low interest rate level. So we feel good, and on behalf of the district, what we're pretty much projecting, and you can hang your hat on, is that the effective rate for this issue, with 25-year, the bulk of it being that long, will be under 3% by some good amount. But with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Trustees, do I have any questions and/or comments? Okay, I see Dr. Rice.
Thank you, President Mays. Ms. Wiliford, thank you for the information. Just curious, not necessarily in association with this, but, you know, the rates coming back up, the talk of banks talking with and about the Fed, the Fed talking about raising rates. Do you have any crystal ball looking at that as far as our future bond sales? What kind of, what kind of jeopardy we're looking at as far as how much more it's gonna cost?
I couldn't say exactly. In fact, there was a quote today during one of our conference calls, a market guy said that he's always said, anyone that projects interest rates will leak glass at some time. So, but I personally feel like we're now in a period where interest rates are headed upward. Everything that's going on from an inflation standpoint and other things that affect the economy, it's just a matter of where they'll stop and so on. And what we've seen, because I kind of jotted down the movement over the last, really, several two or three months, and then going back into '21, it's the shorter term that's come up and all. So somebody the other day said, the fact that long-term rates haven't risen quite as fast or as much means that the fear of this huge inflation that would keep going and, you know, maybe as bad as '80, '81 is not there. But I still feel like the period that we've had of prolonged low interest rates is over, and we're looking at higher rates.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I just, yeah, I was curious of, yeah, I agree, it's just gonna keep going up, but what, at what, at what rate, as far as how high, how fast, kind of thing, just so that we know, and for you and Ms. Moss to kind of project what we need in bond sales, if we should do something sooner than we normally would, because the writing's on the wall, that it's, you know, I just didn't know how high that spike's gonna go or how fast it's gonna go.
And if it helps the Board, as we've modeled this as a multi-year program, the out-years, we don't have modeled anywhere close to current rates. They're more in line with four and a half or even five if it's a three, four, five year out. So there's a lot of hopefully cushion.
Yeah, and what you said about long-term is a bit comforting as well, so that's where we're at, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. Do I have any other questions, comments, motions? Mrs. McMorrow?
President Mays, if there's no other questions, I'd like to make a motion. I move to adopt an order authorizing the issuance and sale of the Arlington Independent School District Unlimited Tax School Building and Refunding Bonds Series 2022, appointing the Board President, Superintendent, or Chief Financial Officer to act as the pricing officer in connection with the sale of the bonds, establishing parameters for the sale of the bonds and approving all other matters incident thereto.
Okay, I've got a motion by Ms. McMorrow. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second by Ms. Fowler. Any discussion? All present vote in the affirmative. The motion passes. Thank you very much, and I will say part of our fiduciary duty is making sure that we are managing the funds appropriately for our taxpayers that did pass the bond, so very much appreciate the thought of doing this so that we don't have opportunities as we've lived since 2020, things have happened that we've never thought could happen before, but that it would not cause us to lose money for our bonding, so thank you very much for that. Thank you, trustees. Okay, next action item, Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mason. Our next action item is TASB Policy Update 118, in addition to CDA Local and EF Local. The Board has had an opportunity to review this. It's gone through committee. We presented for discussion last board meeting, so we're open to any questions and would recommend approval of the policy update.
Okay. Trustees, any questions, comments, motions? Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Mays. If there are no questions or comments at this time, I'd move to approve the local policies included in Update 118 and policies CDA Local and EF Local as presented.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so I've got a motion by Mr. Chapa, a second by Mrs. Fowler. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All present vote in the affirmative. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Our next action item, C, Consider Board Handbook, we will be moving that to our next board meeting. So we will move to action item D. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays, and we bring for your consideration a resolution for an easement, for your consideration. We recommend approval.
Do I have any questions, comments from trustees, or a motion? Dr. Rice?
Yes, if there's no discussion from colleagues, I'm prepared to make a motion, so I'll go ahead and do that, and discussion if there's need after. So I move to approve the attached resolution and an easement for address or access for 91,166 square feet, .44 acres, being a portion of Lot 1, Block A of Arlington ISD Fine Arts Edition, in addition to the city of Arlington, Tarrant County, Texas, according to the plat thereof, recorded under instrument number D218171488, Official Public Records, Tarrant County, Texas.
Okay, before we have a second, just for clarity, Dr. Rice, do you mind reading the square footage of that easement for access again?
Yes, it's 19,166.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, got a motion by Dr. Rice, a second by Mr. Willbanks. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion passes in the affirmative. Thank you very much. We move on our agenda to our discussion action item, universal pre-K. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays, and we bring this item for Board consideration tonight. It is one of those times where it's a big moment in Arlington ISD progression, and it's for universal pre-K, and basically for pre-K service to all four-year-olds in Arlington. As you know, currently, you have to be eligible for pre-K to be served in Arlington schools, but we are bringing this for universal pre-K where anybody who's four years old can come to Arlington ISD pre-K. So it's a, it's a really important time in our district, and I'm just proud of our staff and our teachers and our principals that, and our committee that you will see out here and you'll hear from some of them, that have worked on this and have done a lot of diligent work on it, and I just appreciate the opportunity. So at this time, turn it over to Dr. Brown to start us off in our universal pre-K discussion.
Thank you, President Mays, members of the Board, and Dr. Cavassos. Thank you for the lead-in and the opportunity to present our plan for universal pre-K to the Board this evening. So why universal pre-K for all? There's not a lot that's earth-shattering here, but it certainly, we know when our students do go to pre-K, it does help mitigate the impact of poverty and language gaps that a lot of our kids experience if they're able to get into pre-K. It ensures that once they're in kindergarten, they are more prepared and ready for school. And a couple of ways that is true is that we make sure to provide foundational learning around academic and social and emotional supports and skills that our students need as they transition to school. A commit published a report in 2021 that was pretty alarming and said that only 40% of our students in Texas are, have foundational literacy skills by the third grade. So we know a lot of our work has to be in the early years as we think about pre-kindergarten for all of our students. We also know that it reduces retention and the need for specialized services, so once our students are in school earlier and all have that opportunity, it really ensures that we have reduced opportunities for retention. So this quote by Bill Gates says, "The first five years have so much to do with how the next 80 turn out." 85 years is a long time to live. That would be very nice, but basically what it's saying is that it's important in those first foundational years, that kids are, that we're anchoring them with great foundational skills academically so they can get ahead, so no matter when they exit our system and whatever they do in life, they are more prepared than they would be if they did not attend, of course, that pre-K as well. So a few long-term benefits of pre-K. We recently did a study in Arlington ISD to study trend analysis for those who attend pre-K and those who don't attend pre-K, looking at their kindergarten years, and we'll also share some Texas data with you as well. And so that gap is really extended between pre-K and kinder for those who did not attend. In one way, 51% of kindergarten students who did not attend pre-K did not, did not meet the beginning-of-the-year composite score in literacy. So already, you're coming into kindergarten already at a disadvantage significantly if you didn't attend pre-K in Arlington. And the second one is 60% of our kindergarten students who did not attend pre-K scored below, below basic in the beginning-of-the-year math inventory. So again, two really quick stats that show the need for that early intervention and early support from, for our students. The next one talks about, there are state, state statistics, if you will, and so the state says 40% higher odds of meeting college-ready pace by grade three if they are enrolled in pre-K. We reduce future dropout rates by 7%. We increase on-time graduation by 6%, and we increase post-secondary persistence. So the kids who go to college are able to persist and remain in college, and again, these are all just some long-term benefits of us having universal pre-K option for all of our students. So this is a survey, excuse me, some research by learningpolicyinstitute.org, and just another visual to show you the gaps between those who are attending pre-K and the control group, and those who are not attending pre-K, and everywhere you see a green box there. We had significant, more significant outcomes for students who enrolled in pre-K. we had significant, more significant outcomes for students who enrolled in pre-K when they were in kindergarten. So you see there's the gray will show you there's no difference between comparison groups, between those who attended pre-K and those who didn't. Very little gray on the screen, and there, there's no red, which means there was no, there was no evaluation that showed that kids who attended pre-K did worse than those who did not. So we know again, by all these evaluations also, it shows significant input we get from kids who are attending pre-K. So how does pre-K impact future grade retention and programming? So this is also just another graphic to share with you, and I'll just share a couple of highlights from here. Students who are retained in first grade, in Texas, 5.3% attended pre-K and 6.1 did not attend pre-K. And you could just go down the list and see where there are some, there are gaps clearly. With those who do attend pre-K, there's a less chance of them being retained earlier, further in their elementary years. And there are also some immediate benefits to Universal Pre-K for all of our students. We know pre-K is a fun time. So if you've not been in a pre-K classroom lately, I encourage you to do that because it will totally make your day every single time. In those classrooms, we promote a lot of curiosity and creativity exploration. Our kids, of course, are learning more social skills and how to problem solve and, and meet with their peers and fuss over toys sometimes and things like that. But it also fosters the development of their emotional and cooperation skills. They learn very significant skills early in their childhood through schooling in pre-K that we don't have to wait until kinder to provide those to them. It also, of course, makes sure that learning is fun. Lots of read-alouds, dramatic play, technology. The kids know technology more than we probably do. They're early, you know, they're real early with that and have a really good grasp of it. And it really just helps kids learn how to take care of themselves. At the beginning years, learning how to care for yourself, make sure that your fine motor skills are intact and you're really practicing those road skills. And then physical coordination. We know those are all things we focus on in the early years of elementary education. So those are some immediate benefits. We've talked about long-term benefits. And now Dr. Wertz is going to talk to us about how we assess the need for Universal Pre-K in Arlington.
Good evening, President Mays, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. So as we started thinking about Universal Pre-K here in Arlington, we went through a process to try to identify what the actual need here was in our system. And this just is a quick graphic that shows you pretty much the roadmap for the process that we went through as a team. We conducted a needs assessment to try to understand the gap that exists between the students that attend kindergarten and the students that go to pre-K that go into kindergarten. We started looking at what our facility or infrastructure needs may be in terms of number of classrooms, classrooms with or without restrooms. We looked at staffing to try to understand how many additional teachers may be needed to actually support this many new students that would be coming to the classroom and what that cost would actually be in our system. And then finally, what kind of support considerations should we consider in terms of resources and even district-level wraparound services to support schools as they implement a program that's much more broad since it would include all four-year-olds? And then we came to this recommendation that you're hearing tonight. So the, one of our main considerations as we thought about is how do we make sure that students are kindergarten-ready? And as you heard me mention, I think in our last meeting, the definition for kindergarten readiness is, is not super-defined. It really is left to each system to kind of come to an understanding about what they choose to define as readiness in terms of kindergarten. So Dr. Orsini, our Director of Early Childhood Learning, who's sitting right here, who is the mastermind of all the amazing things we're doing in pre-K, conducted a survey with our teachers just to try to understand pre-K teachers, what their understanding was about kindergarten readiness, the role they played in transitioning students to kindergarten, and the level of collaboration that they actually were currently experiencing with kindergarten teachers. And what we recognized from just a simple questionnaire was that there was a pretty large gap just in terms of collaboration between pre-K and kindergarten and understanding of what kindergarten readiness was and how we can be intentional about ensuring that there's a strong transition that kids that are actually bridging from pre-K go into kindergarten and that the kindergarten program is in, at a rigor that actually takes advantage of the fact that they were in school the previous year. And you'll remember a couple of months ago, you asked a really important question, Mr. Chapa. And I'm not sure that everyone, initially, even when I heard the question about the complexity behind the question, but when the research team started trying to answer, we realized it was actually a pretty complex question. The question was, do kids in Arlington ISD do better when they attend pre-K or, or not do better? And what we found out from that study was that this really was an equity question, that when students are economically disadvantaged and then you add on top of that a language barrier or deficit and/or specialized programming needs, that gap grows and that students who attend pre-K literally just get to the, the starting point. You're actually just trying to zero that out. It doesn't even necessarily give those students the advantage when they're going to kindergarten. They're just showing up at an equal place. So I like this graphic because I think we see it all the time, but it clearly just shows that there isn't a one-size-fits-all scenario. If you're a taller student, you can see over the fence on your own. And if you're a really, really short student, you might need a stepping stool just to get to the starting point so you all have equal access. What pre-K does is it mitigates some of that inequality that exists because of some of the challenges that kids have when they come from an impoverished background, have a language barrier, or need specialized services. So in Arlington, one of the things we're working on a team is defining for ourselves what we mean by kindergarten readiness. Right now, when we report around kindergarten readiness, we're focusing on rapid letter naming. But there are many other components to readiness for kindergarten outside of just rapid letter naming. And so we're in the process of establishing what we're calling benchmark or trend points for each of these subtests for pre-K 4, which we would say as soon as kindergarten-ready, if you meet these thresholds for each of these different areas. You can see on this slide that we assess certain items in pre-K 3 and certain items in pre-K 4, and we do this as a screener, beginning, middle, and end of year using Circle Monitoring, Circle Progress Monitoring System. This year, and I had mentioned this in the last presentation, Dr. Orsini and her team are really focused around three areas in pre-K. One was the introduction of Fountain and Pinnell Literacy Beginnings in pre-K. We have balanced literacy program in our early child, I mean, in our, our primary grades, kinder through second, actually, all of elementary school. What we wanted to do is bring that down to pre-K, and so we've introduced literacy beginnings, which is, as I mentioned, from Fountain and Pinnell, who are really the guided reading or the, the balanced literacy gurus. We're also introduced conscious discipline and feeling buddies just to promote social, emotional development of students with some intentionality in the classroom. And then, of course, specific learning, I mean, classroom standards about what the environment should look like, and I'm going to highlight some examples for that for you this evening. So as a team, we started thinking about this. Okay, so we do pre-K. We know that there's benefits to students who attend pre-K and bringing them at least to an equity standpoint. But how do we then take advantage of the fact that now they're showing up to kindergarten from an equity standpoint, that they don't just capitalize on that one year and they regress back? So what we've talked about is that there really needs to be a revamping of just the way kindergarten instruction happens in the system and that there needs to be a strong bridge that takes place between pre-K and kindergarten. So we're in the process now of kind of reorganizing the way we work so that early childhood learning, which we're calling right now specifically pre-K 3, pre-K 4, and kindergarten, all kind of sit under a similar, one umbrella so that we can make sure that bridge actually happens and that the rigor of instruction that takes place at kindergarten isn't in any way repetitive of pre-K, but actually capitalizes on that equity starting point and ensures that they can then project into the future in a way that's actually going to take advantage of that. Now, when it comes to the learner experience in pre-K, Dr. Brown highlighted a few things, but it's really focused on curiosity and building their confidence and helping kids just to learn how to do school in many ways. Pre-K is not like what you would normally see or you would expect to see in a primary-grade classroom. This is their first introduction to school, and there's a lot of social, emotional, well-being kind of components to it that we take for granted that kids are doing when they're older. They have to be taught that when they come to pre-K. So you'll see here is a list of several things, and many of those things are academic in nature, but there's also some things that are focused just on communicating and learning how to, as, as Dr. Brown said, take care of yourself and interact with other students. We do focus on social and emotional well-being and development, and then we also include, of course, integration of technology to accelerate some of that. In front of you is just a sample slide that gives you a quick overview of what a typical day of a four-year-old looks like in a full-day program here in Arlington. One of the things that I really appreciate about Dr. Orsini when she accepted this role as early childhood director was to bring some continuity across the system in the kind of experience kids were having at any school so that your experience as a learner wasn't dependent on the school you went to or even the teacher that you had. There was some continuity. And so this is just an example of a typical four-year-old program that you would see at any of our schools. And you'll notice on there, there's academic components. There's opportunities for kids to engage in, in things like phonological awareness and learning, and then circle time, all the way down to even when rest is defined. This slide here is kind of blurry, but if you're able to actually see the words, which I'm happy to send to you, I noticed it was blurry when I sent it, is basically a rubric of some sorts, not even a rubric, but like a checklist that the team uses to really define what a quality learning environment in the pre-K setting should look like. So you'll see in there, there are specific learning centers, how they're labeled, how you display student work, all the way down to the way you structure the classroom. And so when the team goes and visits pre-K classrooms, they leverage this checklist to kind of provide feedback to the teachers in terms of glows and grows and opportunities to really refine that kind of environment so that it's optimal for early childhood learning. Now, one thing we want to introduce that's a little different for Universal Pre-K here in Arlington is under Dr. Orsini's vision, we really want to integrate STEM into our program. It's an opportunity for all young learners to engage in STEM. If you'll recall from the previous bond, we integrated STEM labs into all of our elementary schools, and this is an opportunity to get the young learners into the lab in a meaningful way. And so people might be asking, well, what is STEM education? Well, it's really an opportunity for, for schools to really focus on giving students an opportunity to problem-solve and to think critically and to understand the cause and effect between the way things work. It's, for those who are maybe listening wondering what STEM means, it's science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. It doesn't necessarily mean that students are engaged in really complex engineering problems, but there is engineering concepts and mathematic concepts that really are really focused around this idea of critical thinking. So why would we want to integrate that? Well, it gives opportunity for students to really focus on learning across different environments. STEM is not isolated into one content area only. It really is more hands-on, and it gives kids early exposure when we bring it into pre-K. It also prepares them to be proficient in subject areas or to think about subject areas that will have future job opportunities as they're going. So we might be thinking, well, why were you introducing this idea of STEM and job opportunities for a pre-K learner? It isn't that they're going to pick the job they want in pre-K. It's more to start stirring their curiosity because where kids start to develop their passions starts very early in what you expose them to. And then finally, it really does facilitate activities that are fun and engaging. Most of our, most young learners are naturally inclined towards scientific concepts. What we have to do in the challenge education is to make sure that that inclination stays in place as they actually matriculate and get older. So you may be asking, so what? So if you were to look at the job market across the United States, 20% of all US jobs are falling right now within STEM careers, and they pay higher. And so what we feel like as an opportunity in Arlington ISD is to put these opportunities in front of students at a very early age and give them a chance to start to grow interest in areas where we know job market will be available to them as they grow. Also, as job opportunities in science are increasing, we want to make sure that kids have full opportunity to those and that they are, they are actually exposed to concepts that they're going to have offered to them when they're older here in Arlington, when we have CTE courses and other things that will actually, you know, hit their interest points. When you think about it from a soft-skill standpoint, one of the things we've talked a lot about with Active Learning Cycle and our learner framework here is this, that the endpoint really is not just about learning academics. That's the means to the end. It really is about developing concrete skills that you can apply in any environment, whatever your choice may be. Well, STEM also helps with this. So as you can see on this simple graphic, it really is focused on developing these, what we call life-ready skills in this graphic, it's the 21st century skills, but all the same typical kinds of concepts. Self-directed learning, problem-solving, collaboration, entrepreneurship, creativity. And you do that all within the context and the means of these different content areas. Scientific inquiry, application of technical knowledge, really understanding how to leverage data to understand how things work. And in design thinking, design thinking is really about building from scratch, being creative, and kids that are in, in a STEM environment have the opportunity to do those kinds of things. And so what we hope to do by integrating STEM for all pre-K students in each of our schools is, as I mentioned earlier, is to create a, a classroom, give them access to the, the STEM labs at the schools to engage in discovery, to understand and learn more about science and technology and to enjoy it, and then to foster some of those mathematical skills that we know they're going to be leveraging as they get older. This is a slide that, that shares with you what our current pre-K enrollment is and where we're projecting it to go. So if you'll look on the far-left-hand side, this is based on snapshots. So snapshot is the last Friday of every October, and these are the students that we capture in terms of what our, what our actual enrollment is. And so right this year, we had 830 pre-K 3 students. We had 2,420 pre-K 4. We had 218 ECSC, and our total was a little over 3,400 students. We're projecting that to increase. And as you look to the far-right-hand side, when you think about the number of students we would actually have growing, you'll see that the total number of growth that we expect to see in a full-time pre-K, Universal Pre-K program will be an additional 1,184 students. Now, you might be wondering, where's this number coming from? Part of it is just a simple gap. You have this many kindergarten students show up, and this is the difference between the number of kindergarten students you have and those that were eligible for pre-K or weren't eligible and didn't come. So we were able to look at that gap to try to understand, like, well, if we were to have all of our kindergarten students actually show up for pre-K, what would that number typically be? We do have some registration goals, and they're, they're aggressive because we want to make sure we can capitalize on all the opportunities that students may have. So beginning April 1st, so everybody who's listening online, April 1st, you can register your students for pre-K. And our goal is to try to register at least half of those students here in the spring. The goal is to get to about 70% of the eligible four-year-olds, which are all four-year-olds in our area, registered by May. And then we'll keep working over the summer so that by August, 100% of our students are enrolled. There is some unique things that the district will be trying, including bringing registration to families. So we're looking at mobile registration just to increase access. And Dr. Orsini's been, is working really well with Anita Foster and the Communications Team and Dr. Hill's team, just to make sure that our registration process happens efficiently so we can capture as many students as possible. So now I'm going to turn it over to Darla, and she's going to talk a little bit about facilities, operations, and the budget.
Thanks again. And so we were tasked with determining how we're going to fund Universal Pre-K. We saw the need for it through the work that Dr. Wertz and Dr. Brown and the whole team really did. We started this work in October of last year, and, and a group of us met on a pretty much weekly basis trying to determine how we could make this happen for our students. And so facilities and operations, Mr. Horn and his team completed an analysis of both facilities and operations based on the projected enrollment that Dr. Wertz shared with you. And he determined that an addition of approximately 82 restrooms would be needed, and they would be added to existing classrooms that we have in place already. The total cost estimate for that is $16.2 million for those renovations to the restrooms. The estimate for FFNE, our furniture, fixture, and equipment, is approximately $1.7 million, and that would determine or put the FFB in place to match, meet our pre-K standards. There's no impact to custodial or maintenance or ground staffing for that. So his team determined that the facilities would need to be in three phases, and each phase for a year, the first year would be '22, '23, or the implementation year that we're asking for Universal Pre-K to be put in place. Existing classroom spaces can be utilized, and restrooms will be needed, of course, to add. The approximate cost for Phase 1 would be $5.2 million for that phase of the renovation. And again, that's the '22, '23 fiscal year. Phases 2 and 3, we're projecting renovations will occur in fiscal years '23, '24, and '24, '25. The team's evaluation determined that not all campuses would require additional restrooms or renovations. The cost estimate for Phases 3, 2 and 3 is $11 million. And again, the estimate of the total facility renovations is at $16.2 million. We reached out to Dr. Hill, and he collaborated with his team to determine what the impact would be on transportation. Based on current pre-K ridership and expected enrollment, the evaluation determined no additional bus drivers would be needed and no additional bus drivers would be needed. and no additional transportation costs are expected. Mr. Lewis and his team also evaluated the, the impact of additional pre-K students to the student nutrition budget based on the current enrollment that we're estimating that Dr. Wertz shared. The cost for meals for additional students can be absorbed in the current budget, and meals are actually reimbursable to the district, and there is no additional staffing needed in student nutrition. Mr. Mark Strand and his team also looked at enrollment and the numbers that Dr. Wertz shared with you. Our current kindergarten enrollment was used as a baseline, as he stated. And we're looking at 46 ESL pre-K teachers and five bilingual pre-K teachers. And then we would need an additional 51 teacher assistants and all benefits that are associated with those staff members. And they are included in the cost estimate of just above $5 million. And so this slide just kinds of gives you a picture of, of the budget that we've estimated. Startup costs include renovations, furniture fixtures, and equipment for a total estimate of $17.9 million over the three-year period. And these costs are listed on, on the chart there under federal revenue. Those revenues would be coming from ESAR III. They are actually included in the budget. One point we need to make is that they do require TEA approval, and that request, request is currently in process. If you look at our ongoing costs that we determined, it includes our personnel cost and campus allocation for supplies and other materials for daily operations. The revenue sources that are identified for fiscal year 2023 comes from assigned fund balance. If you'll recall, we assigned just over $5 million for Universal Pre-K when we closed out the 2021 fiscal year. And for ESAR I funds on fiscal year 23, 24, and 24, 25, we plan to use ESAR II dollars and commit those dollars to fund balance, and they would be available for us to spend in both the 23, 24, and the 24, 25. So at this time, we have balanced the budget based on those revenue sources that we have identified for the next three years. Then I'll let Dr. Wertz.
So what you have in front of you is just a few quotes of parents, a couple of parents. And I'm going to also share with you quotes from a couple of teachers who are participating in pre-K program. One parent said, "I am super satisfied with the ASD pre-K program. At my child's school, they have open communication with parents and provide great resources on how to be a better parent by being involved in your child's education. And if they don't know the right answer now, they'll help you find it." "I was afraid of, of her going to school because of the limited social interaction she was used to. At home, it's just her one-year-old brother, her dad, and I, but she adapted socially very quickly and has made friends, and she's come home, she comes home and tells us about her friends at school." Another parent said, "Learning the letters of the alphabet, she struggled a lot, and now she knows them. She has shown so much, so much progress in such a short time. I'm very satisfied with the program and the teacher on a scale of one to 10. I would give them a 10. The teacher is amazing and loves her job, and she shows it every day." Ms. Bierstedt, which is a teacher at Goodman Elementary, said, "Our program is well-rounded. It includes time to learn, language arts, math, science, and social studies for a strong foundation for kinder. I love my job as a teacher, but to be a pre-K teacher was my dream. I love the little kids, their energy, innocence, and their conversations." Ms. Modewell at Moore Elementary said, "The best thing about pre-K full day is the opportunity to provide a strong foundation for learners to engage in purposeful play, which anchors their classroom learning in a creative and meaningful way. This opportunity builds their social, emotional skills and allows them to problem solve alongside their peers." And then finally, Ms. Cloud at Duff says, "Pre-K is about providing students and families with the very first best experience at school. It is about preparing young learners to start kindergarten and kick off a lifelong journey of learning." And I think she really captures what the essence of what pre-K really is supposed to be about. We want to extend our gratitude to several members of the committee that worked hard on this. The major lift that's happening in terms of the actual programming is Dr. Rossini, and she has a great team and a strong vision, and we're very grateful for her. And at this time, as a, as a team, we'd like to recommend, the administration recommends that the board approve the proposal for implementation of Universal Pre-K program beginning this fall of 2022.
Thank you so much, Dr. Brown, Dr. Wertz, Mrs. Moss. Thank you all so much for this presentation. I know we're going to have some questions, so Mrs. Fowler?
Thank you, President Mays. Okay, let me think how to, how to phrase this question. So we know that kids that have been in the pre-K to kindergarten, we can measure that. But those are kids that have also been socially, economically disadvantaged. Are there any studies to show, now that it's going to be universal, that means everyone can come that wants to? So is there a way to, to look to see what is the measurement of universal to kindergarten compared to economically disadvantaged to kindergarten?
So are you asking internally here in Arlington or just across the country?
Across the country.
Yeah, there are studies, so Universal Pre-K is, there are several studies specifically about Universal Pre-K. One was a strong one that came out of, out of Oklahoma. And yeah, there are studies that focus specifically on Universal Pre-K programs. What they're finding is pre-K programs in general do better, but it's the quality of the program that actually makes the difference. So it's not just going to a program and having time at school. It's the actual quality of the design of the program that actually generates the outcome for students. So what we'll do here in Arlington, of course, is we'll measure the impact that Universal Pre-K is having on our kids. I suspect, because the program is going to be designed well, that not only will it bring the students who are economically disadvantaged or those that might just need to have an equity question corrected there, but even students who are not economically disadvantaged or don't necessarily have the, the backgrounds that normally would create an inequitable situation, they're still going to benefit from it. So the reason why I mentioned earlier kindergarten is because the goal as a system is you want to capitalize on that regardless of where they land in kinder. So what we want to make sure we're doing is that we're providing a really strong differentiated learning experience for kids when they hit kindergarten that will be able to springboard from whatever place they finish when they finish pre-K, whether that's from a, an equity standpoint, just getting to the finish line or getting to the, getting to the starting point of kindergarten readiness or, or students who are actually going to start kindergarten ahead of what they normally would just because they went to pre-K.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Fowler. Mrs. McMura?
Thank you so much. This is so exciting. I just, this is a mountain that we're moving as a district. And I think that next year, whether those projected numbers end, ending up being very precise or not, this is just something that will really have an impact for years, if not generations to come. This is so exciting. I was going to ask if you can elaborate on how our kinder program will change. I know you mentioned trying to build bridges between pre-K and kinder, which I think is wonderful. But you know, when I hear rigor in kindergarten in the same sentence, I sit up a little straighter. We still want our kindergartners to learn through play and, you know, have stations. And I think, you know, with what, with the state, a lot of it is state mandated, but what we're already putting on our kinders is pretty rigorous. Can you just kind of fill in that?
Sure. Yeah, it's the, what, what I'm trying to say is not that we would necessarily turn kindergarten to first grade. That's, it just says, to make it really simple. It was more in reference to making sure there's a stronger bridge so that when kids leave pre-K and they go to kindergarten, that there's, there's teachers who are skilled at taking advantage of really creating a differentiated experience for those kids because what we're finding in the reading that we've been doing is that when kids go to pre-K, if they go to kinder, if that differentiated place isn't, isn't happening, the benefits you gain from pre-K only last about a year. And so the point is, is if we're going to spend all of our time investing in having kids come to school early, how do we make sure that that growth they have is actually perpetuated for years to come? And it doesn't kind of pitter out after a year. So really, it's more about kind of what's happened here in, in pre-K. It really isn't about changing the experience so that it turns more into first grades, for example. It's really more about making sure there's some continuity in terms of quality across the whole system in a way that's very similar to the way we did pre-K this year. Right now, you have kindergarten in all different places. But if we actually do it under the early childhood umbrella, under one department that supports that group, there's collaboration between pre-K teachers and kinder teachers. There's intentional transition meetings that happen between those two groups of people so that when the students are transitioning to the next grade level, there's discussion about how that should look. And the positive thing about this is there'll be pre-K in every school. So you won't have students that are going to be coming to your campus who are sitting at a center somewhere. They're literally in the classroom next door. So it's really more about building that kind of continuity across the system. So the level of rigor is there, it's guaranteed regardless of what school or teacher you have. Not necessarily that we would be adopting something outside of what you described because you're right, kindergarten is still, for some kids, their first entry point. Hopefully, that won't be the case, but that will be the case for some. And, and there's still an element of play in social, emotional development.
That's very exciting. And I know every year at the kindergarten roundup that we do, and then, you know, the first day of school, it's, it's really kindergarten teachers who are wonderful. They, it, it's a toss-up how, how school-ready that class is going to be. And usually, the gap is very wide when they get to know their students that first week. So this will be a game changer for our kindergarten teachers because they will see their incoming cohort. And many campuses, they're not, they don't have any pre-K. And so I think that this will be wonderful in that aspect. I really like the idea of the STEM focus, and I know you, you touched on this, but I just want to reiterate the social benefits that come with a STEM focus, especially for our young learners because we're encouraging them to stick with problems longer. STEM encourages risk-taking, resourcefulness, and I think that this is really building a good foundation for kindergarten readiness, excitement about coming to school, learning about, you know, getting along with your classmates. So that's really exciting as well. I think that's all my questions for now, but I can't thank, thank every single staff member for everything you've done. I know this was a lot of work, bathrooms, furnishing, staffing, you know, it, it, there are so many moving parts, but we're making it work, and I know this will be a huge benefit to our district and our families. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mrs. McMura. Mr. Hogg?
Thank you. That's what happened when I was first talking about it. Thank you, President Mays. Thank you to the team on there. And I think if anyone, listen, this is a great thing for the district. This is a really big thing for the district. We talk about students coming into kindergarten and, you know, the, the varying levels that they come in at and how much kindergarten teachers' jobs have changed over many years of having to differentiate really learning and guiding things on that. I really think that fourth slide, it talks about the goal, 60% of kindergarten's below basic and beginning year math inventory. It makes a big difference because if a kid's starting off, if they start off in pre-K a little behind, we can get them caught up. If we can start them off in kindergarten, they start on the right track to where they're going. So I really appreciate this. I'm all for this. Let me ask two questions on there. With a projected of about 1,000, 1,100 extra students coming in, approximately 50 teachers, I think 50 TAs coming in. We know across all of education, we're starting to face teacher shortages, right? And I think it's only going to be a problem going forward anymore. Is there, what's our recruiting tools? What's our concern over being able to fill those positions? Because some of those positions will be pulled from teachers that could be third-grade teachers, second-grade teachers. Is there a risk of having, or do we think that's a different pool we're pulling from? Because I've been to pre-K teachers' classrooms, and they're a special breed. They are amazing what they do. I don't know how they do it. But I am concerned over, if, if we're not talking about teacher shortages in the future, we're missing what's happening as we see coming up in the future.
Yeah, so I, I think, Mr. Hogg, you're exactly right. This, this and teacher shortages, we can talk about that a lot. But this is an area where, this is why we're bringing it early. We've done a lot of work. We accelerated some of the work. That, that's the part that they don't talk about is that we just accelerated this to, to try to get to a decision point so we can begin the process of hiring teachers. We have much better success because of things that the board has already done, which is make salaries very competitive across the board, but for teachers in particular. And I think, and Mr. Strand, if you want to address some of this, but we have a lot of success with hiring early childhood teachers because there's a good number of them available and things like that. And I think that as we get this rolling out, that also changes in terms of staffing as well, opportunities. But Mr. Strand, you want to address any of the specific of, not the ease, but the fact that there is a population that's more...
Dr. Ross and Mr. Strand, I don't need strategies. I need the reassurance that we're going to be able to fill these positions, and we're not going to have long-term subs in other positions within, you know. And I'm assuming, and the last thing I'll ask, these all qualify under the EC through 4 certification, correct? Just making sure.
Correct. President Mays, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. So we're right, like this week, today, this week, we're in the middle of staffing. And so there's going to be a mix of, at some campuses, you know, they're going to lose some teachers, and at some campuses, they're going to gain some teachers. And so there'll be some of that interplay, like you were mentioning. The key cert will be that pre-K 4, although you can with EC 6. But we have a lot, like Dr. Cavassos was saying, who come into the district and say, I, you know what? My life, I want to be a pre-K K1, 2 teacher. Usually, we have a little more trouble with fifth and sixth grade. Nothing else needs to be said there. So our hope is, especially with this early onset, that we can get out there and get the pre-K teachers. In the meetings I'm already having, the principals will say to me something like, oh, this is awesome because, you know, Mark Strand has been a, a third-grade teacher, and he's always wanted to teach pre-K. So there's going to be that, that movement around the district and around also within the, the schools themselves. So while I couldn't guarantee it, I'm fairly confident that with pre-K teachers and this early, early, I guess, onset of, of recruiting for them, that we should be in good shape, so.
Thank you, Mr. Strand. It explains a lot. My wife started off as a student teacher in, like, pre-K and kindergarten, and then she got a fifth-grade job. She always thought she wanted the littles, and then she fell in love with fifth graders. So that's where she did that. So thank you, Mr. Strand. I just think we always have to, if this board's not keeping an eye and caution. The most effective thing we can do is a highly effective teacher in every classroom. And we see the problems that come from, you know, we have some great subs and some great long-term subs, but it's still not a day-in, day-out teacher on that. So I, I would be lying if I didn't say I have concern over adding more full-time employees and filling this from teacher shortage. But starting early, I have more faith. Mr. Strand, you got a big job on recruiting, and I've seen what some other districts have been doing on recruiting. And so I think we have to target those because, you know, you may have it. You may be able to fill all the pre-Ks, but then are we leaving a third-grade short or a fourth-grade short or a fifth grade, the fifth or sixth grade, which anyone who can teach middle school and all that, you're a blessing from that. On the same note.
Well, and one other thing that you just mentioned that's really spot on is you mentioned that we have subs that are out there. But Arlington is really fortunate because we have quite a few subs that are going for their certification.
Yeah.
And they're not, not quite there yet. So, you know, we say, finish up, come in and long-term sub for us. And then when you finish, I mean, it kind of works to our advantage too because we get to see them in action. But then we can go ahead and just grab them before they go elsewhere, so.
And, and one, one last little point because I think Mark deals with this all the time. By the way, Mark has been waiting a long time to come to the podium. Actually, not. But I think what's important to note also is that, and it may sound counterintuitive, but the sooner you know you have vacancies, the, the more efficient you can hire. What happens, and you know this, Mr. Hogg, you've been on the board. What happens is late resignations, vacancies that occurred later in the year, occur in June. That gets really difficult to fill. But if Mark knows he has X number of vacancies because of this initiative, if it gets approved, then he can start hiring, and it's actually more efficient that way because early notification of we have vacancies and come to our district is a success there.
And being able to go to recruiting fairs and say we're rolling out Universal Pre-K, I know helps your hard job.
Absolutely. And like I said, we finish up elementary staffing this week, so we'll be able to get on it right away, so.
And, and will, on those positions we're filling, will you allow teachers within the district that are in other grades to apply for those positions?
Yes. What, what we do is the campuses, they first of all go and, and absorb typically. You know, if I'm at Pope, for example, and I'm a first-grade teacher and I've always wanted to be a pre-K teacher, they're going to get that first shot at it. And before we, you know, we look at transfers then, and then we look at external hires. And I think everybody knows here, we're going to get to the point this year where we will be taking external hires as well just because there is that need.
Right, of course. Mr. Strand, thank you so much. I don't think this next one's for you. Dr. Ross, or Dr. Wertz or someone, let me ask the question. Right, of course. Um, Mr. Shan, thank you so much. I don't think this next one's you. Dr. Ross, let me, or Dr. Warrick or someone, let me ask the question. What are we doing to enhance? Sometimes you need pre and post-school care. What are we doing, especially in the pre K environment for te- parent families that are working on those? And some of our, the childcare centers and those provide that. Are, are we expanding those opportunities or partnerships to work with groups that can help with those things?
Absolutely, Mr. Hogg. So this year, and then I'll give some context, but we have expanded to after-school care and before-school care. Uh, and specifically focused on serving pre K through six in elementary, right? Because there's a different certification, long story, but, and so we actually through ESSR funds and others, were able to lift that. Then comes a complication that the providers are struggling with staffing. So they're still trying to start some of these after-school and before-school care. But that's our goal for every school to have that, because it is a need for pre K families, families of pre K students to have that care. So the, the funding is there, the contracts are there. Now the providers are, are struggling with staffing, just to be transparent. And so um, we anticipate that that'll level off, just like everything else. And we'll be able to lift those this spring and then certainly for the fall, have all those ready.
A- and I think, you know, just listen, a lot of pre K, we do have multiple fam- dual families of dual, dual parents working um, in, in pre K. And I, I think the more we can be flexible and offer our facilities, offer those things to be able to assist that. I just encourage staff to think of those things because it is a critical factor as after-school. You know, pre, pre K starts fairly early, but still sometimes parents need to drop off early. Um, you know, with my church, I help with the child development center and I know how early sometimes they drop off and how late they can sometimes pick up. Because parents are driving all over um, to sometimes work. Let me add, and, and I appreciate that. And I just kind of, that was more of a statement to make sure we're still working through that. Let me, let me ask, and I brought it up a couple of meetings ago. Um, and I, I want to make sure we bring it up again. Um, as the city and the city focuses on educational, bringing all the units together. And as the largest educational institution in the city of Arlington, I do think it is our responsibility as we train. Um, as Ms. Orsini and our entire team built out really strong pre K training. The more we can offer that support to child development centers within the city of Arlington, it benefits us in the long run. I, I know there's a cost to everything, um, and listen, that's not taken lightly. But a lot of students that are in private um, pre K centers, which is totally fine. Because some parents may want to do two days a week or three days a week, um, or, or need that extra long childcare and it provides that. Or they want to send them to their churches childcare center and those are good things. Um, those are fine. We don't, we don't, students don't have to come in. We're an option of one of the many options where we come. I, I think is our responsibility to help that training. Um, and help provide the professional development for all of those. Because the more any student is educated in Arlington in pre K, a large majority of these students will be joining the AISD. Um, and our goal of pre K is to educate students and have them prepared for kindergarten. That is, that, and, and just be awesome. Let's, let's throw pre K, it's awesome. But it, it's to be prepared for kindergarten. So I, I don't know how we do that, but I do think it is a critical factor. Where we're helping any of the procheal, any of the privates, um, any of these pre Ks within our city. To have more training, more development, because I don't think people realize how extensive our training is. You look at just a couple of these slides, you know, if you've never walked in a pre K classroom. You realize it, I would, it's not chaos, it's very organized chaos, right? And, and it is structured and it is amazing what they do and how everything is very intentional. And they have a lot of fun, but it's very intentional learning with very strong curriculum. That's catered to a three-year-old, that's catered to a four-year-old to really guide them. And so I, I think we'd be doing ourself a disservice if we're not providing that to the entire city to guide through that. So I, I just think it's like we need to keep pushing.
Absolutely. And that's a commitment that we're, we're going to make is to make sure that we open up our training. Because you're right, it benefits all of us and this is a community effort for early education. So wherever students are, are served, but you're right, they eventually come to AISD, many, many of those students. So absolutely, we'll provide those opportunities.
That's all I needed. The last thing I was taught a long time ago when I walk in a pre K, you always end with yay pre K. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. And Mr. Wilbanks, can I just say something real quick before I go to you? Okay. So can you please put up the slide that says so what? Thank you. I love that picture. I mean, because that is the so what. That's so what for everything that, that we do. That, that picture is very, very powerful. Um, so thank you. I want that up while I'm talking second.
Okay.
So as Dr. Cavassos said, yes, speedy up. But yes, you did say it subliminally when you said, we started in October of twenty-one. And you're looking to have parents start registering April first. That's, that's fast. But, and thank you so much for the hard work. But that also says that it's a seed that's been planted well before October of twenty-one. And so for that, I appreciate the perseverance when the opportunity presented itself with having ESSR funds to help plant some of our money. Um, I very much appreciate moving forward and bringing the opportunity for us to have this. Um, closing gaps. Um, as a board, we talk about that all the time when we're doing strategic planning. Here's a huge opportunity to close gaps. Um, April first, April first. I'm so excited for putting that out uh, for parents to see. Just like Mr. Hogg said, it's just another opportunity um, for our students to um, start a little earlier. And a word that I heard is life's, life lessons. I, I mean, I hear that still being wanted from parents in junior high and high school. So to start that foundation, I hope that's an area that maybe we as a district can continue to um, matriculate that up. And, and, and put that in curriculum or so forth um, to make sure that they continue with that skill. That's so important that just sometimes seems to be missing because we're so focused on making sure that, that they're getting all the lessons. So I just wanted to throw that out there. So thank you for putting that picture up. Mr. Wilbanks?
Thank you, President Mays. And Mr. Hogg, I appreciate your comments about recruiting and how that's going to be a big issue. And I do want to remind you that since potentially you won't be on the school board anymore for next year. That maybe we could lean on you to help recruit a really capable pre uh, uh, pre K teacher that you have at home. Well, it's worth a try. And my, you know, my wife was also a pre K teacher and I, and I was just blown away and amazed at the transformation that's made from the beginning of the year to the end of year with her students. And she's kept up with a number of those students and that went on to have careers at Wall Street. Gone into the medical um, profession, um, in the performing arts, uh, you name it. So uh, amazing crew of kids that she was able to keep track of. Um, and it is, has been a game changer. Pre K was a game changer for, for them and there's no question about it. Um, and um, you know, there's study after study after study who, who tout the benefits. And you, and, and you talked about that. Uh, but there was a, a study just this week that showed what can happen if it's not done right. And I think you're familiar with the Tennessee study that came out within the last couple of weeks. Uh, that showed that in Tennessee, that the, after a couple of years and after one year of kindergarten. There was no uh, uh, no appreciable difference between the kids that were in kindergarten without. But as you stated, there are known reasons why that would be. And I think in that case, are you familiar with the study?
I haven't read that one. I haven't read that one. But I think what you're saying is perpetuated in other studies too. I did read one specifically that I referenced, which was uh, it actually included a few districts. I'm not sure Tennessee was in it. But it was, they primarily focused in Oklahoma. But the outcomes were very much what you were saying, which is it's not just about the pre K program. It's not about, it's not just about going to pre K, it's about the quality of the program that kids actually attend. That makes the difference. And then what you do after the fact.
And what you do after the fact. And I think um, the number one thing they cited in the, in the Tennessee study or that experts, you know, point to is the fact that it wasn't age appropriate. Uh, they tried to, you know, to Ms. McMurro's concern. Um, it, there wasn't enough of the play learning. There was maybe too much emphasis on making it kindergarten mini or first grade mini. Um, and then they also didn't do the bridge. That's all the important part. Uh, and so on your slide, you know, the welcome to kindergarten slide that you put up there. You, you know, you hit the uh, nail on the head that it's really important that we think about holistically. And um, the, that whole progression from kindergarten, uh, from pre K to kindergarten. Um, and that's the key. You know, and the, and you know, my concern and you know, and I'm, I'm happy to see that we, we've built as a uh, we've kind of thought holistically about that system because it's a very important, because if you do it right. It's, you can maximize the gains of pre K throughout that student's entire academic career. Um, as my wife's former students point out, you know, the sky's the limit for them. The other thing I wanted to ask about is, um, you know, as someone who cut their teeth in Silicon Valley engineer major, um, engineer marketing major. And whose son has benefited from STEM in education here. Um, I kind of like the fact that you're focused on there, but as Mc- Ms. McMurro pointed out, I still kind of stand up going, okay. Are we, you know, is it going to be age appropriate? And, and um, and focus more on kind of those things that we know are best practices. Uh, for the kids to be doing it that, again, to maximize that um, lifelong benefits of pre K. Um, I do like the mobile registration access. Um, I'm a little worried about the cost, but I think the benefits will far outweigh the cost of that. Um, I don't know whose idea that was, but kudos to them for um, doing the mobile registration truck. The final comments I want to make are related to the cost. And um, uh, we are blessed, I guess, with the ESSR funds. Because um, for years and years and years, when I was chair of FFC, in fact, I think going all the way back when Justin and I first uh, started on FFC many, many years ago, I'm not going to say how many. He brought it up, it was brought up every year. And I think there was a desire uh, for our whole community um, to move to the point that we provide universal pre K. And to see that it finally come to fruition and maybe had taken a, a global pandemic to give us the resources to do it with. But hey, we'll take it. Um, if that can be the silver lining, that's a big one. Um, and so I am over the moon that the thing that we've hoped for, for over ten years. Eight years, ten years, somewhere in there, has finally come to fruition. So um, I also want to point out that if you look at the cost. Sorry about that. Let me move my mic so I don't do that again. My fear was that, that the ongoing costs were going to be significant. But when you look at roughly five million dollars, Ms. Moss, um, of estimated um, ongoing cost. That's less than one percent of our current budget, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So that's something we can easily work in. I mean, the, you know, I think the big impediment um, to getting this off the ground. Were that, those startup costs and the construction. And so now we have a mechanism to do that. And we've always talked about how do we make those ESSR funds sustainable? Well, I can't think of a better way to make those funds more sustainable and make a lifelong impact on our students. Than this program. So uh, given that, um, for as long as I remember, uh, for years and years. Um, that we've had the support of the community. I would like to wholeheartedly move approval of the proposal for implementation of a universal pre-kindergarten program. Beginning in the fall of amazingly, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, I've got a motion by Mr. Wilbanks, a second by Mr. Chapa. Any discussion? Dr. Reich?
Yeah, uh, had, had some questions in full support, but uh, wanted to ask some questions. Uh, Ms. Moss, come on back since you're right there. Uh, simple, uh, simple questions, uh, just dovetailing on what Mr. Wilbanks was talking about on recurring cost. Uh, I was just curious on the uh, uh, twenty-three to four to five increases. What factor were you using on increasing from the five oh one?
For the personnel cost?
To the five two four five for personnel, yes.
Yes, I think we were very conservative and we did about a two percent increase if I'm correct.
Okay, okay. I figured it was something like that. And uh, as of right now, we are not, uh, we don't gain that funding from the state. So I don't know what is going to happen with the next legislative session. None of us do. But uh, I guess we'll have to see if we can push. Because if we can get that funded through the state, this thing pays for itself really easily. Thanks to ESSR and other things and not having to ad- invest with additional bond dollars to go into the initial facilities investment. So hopefully it's a win-win there. Um, that was, that was just the question. So thank you very much.
And I, I will say we, we are laser focused on finances. Uh, we identified this in these ESSR funds as a way to um, to fund this for the next three years. But we're also uh, heavy in the work of right sizing the budget and general operating. Uh, so that once ESSR funds are gone, we can continue the program as well.
Yep, yep, absolutely. Thank you. Um, I do have a, a couple of other questions, wouldn't be for you. Uh, I mean, you can try to answer them. It might be entertaining, but I don't think you'd want to. So I'm, I'm curious on a couple of things. One, Marcel probably knows what I'm going to ask. What is, I'm.
And I think we have an answer.
Yeah, uh, Montessori.
Yes.
Yeah.
So if you want to ask it, go ahead and then we'll answer.
I'm just, just curious. I mean, I see, I see pieces of it in here. Uh, but I, I would like, because I've been a Montessori advocate since I got on the board. And uh, this is obviously a, a key component and with Montessori, there, there's elements in there with the, the uh, conflict resolution. And the, the critical thinking, the manipulatives, that, those kind of things for pre K three, four. So tell me what, what you learned and how it is incorporated in here so I can stop talking about Montessori.
Go ahead. Okay, so um, I would not say that Montessori was intentionally integrated into this. That wasn't the intent. I do think to what, to your point, that there are some, there are elements that are part of a Montessori learning environment that you can extract from one of the things we talked about. Um, but we are investigating the possibility of Montessori and how we can integrate that. Um, but we're, we're really in the investigation stage. I have a team actually looking into that. It would not necessarily be um, as they, it, it wouldn't, it's not intended to be Montessori across all the schools. But we are looking at whether Montessori is a feasible program option that we could consider in the future.
Okay, that's even more than what I was thinking. Yeah, I, uh, ju- just the elements of it alone without becoming a, a fully Montessori and following Murray Montessori methodology and all of that, that's very different trying to blend that into our public education environment.
But, but Dr. Reich, to, to your question that you've asked before, that is a designer, is to, if we can stand up a, a program. Not the entire district, but a program that's specifically focused on that. There are costs associated with that and training and.
It's complex.
Runways, it's very complex. However, for any complexity, we have Dr. Orsini.
Yes.
That can solve just about anything. Uh, and, and we don't want to over commit right now, but uh, but it, they are in the investigation. And I, and we have to give them a little space to investigate and bring back the time. So.
Uh, absolutely. And yeah, thank you, uh, Dr. Orsini for everything. It, it's, it is really exciting to see this. One question, and another question I have is so STEM versus STEAM. STEAM's big buzzword nationally out there. Um, and I'm not so much concerned with the actual STEAM curriculum, but I, I was looking through and I see music is in here. Uh, what other arts are integrated into this? As we know, arts is everything about brain development and learning and it's going to be an enhancer.
It will have the full um, art curriculum that we would normally provide to a pre K student, which would include music and art. Because a lot of the things that kids do to learn include our.
Yeah.
Movement, all of that. movement, all of that P E. Um, or physical kind of education in some way. But yeah, the reason we said STEM primarily is not because it would be a lack of art integration that will very much be part of the program. It was more to highlight the specifics of the, the difference, which is the STEM curriculum, whereas art has always been part of our program and will continue to be. The emphasis and the change will be their integration into like the STEM labs, the critical thinking, that kind of thing. That's the reason why we differentiated it too, but the arts will very much be part of it, yeah.
Sure, sure.
So, Dr. Raich, so what you've seen is that it, it was a huge discussion, debate, argument, I don't know, whatever we want to call it, related to this entire topic.
Really?
And where we ended up was, Anita won, no, where we ended up was, it's too much transparency, but where we ended up was that the arts are already integrated and Arlington has invested in the arts for years.
Absolutely.
What's new about this is the STEM experience and that's where we ended up with STEM versus the STEAM because that arts is already integrated fully into our, our district thanks to the support of the board and community. And so STEM was the real, uh, difference, if you will, uh, in terms of the experience that we're going to live, yeah.
But thank you very much for validating me. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah, no, no tell there. Uh, well, I do think it's, uh, definitely something from a, from a communication standpoint, that, that some parents are driven by those buzzwords. And there are a lot of them out there that I think maybe wouldn't realize that we are amazing with arts. And so it's not just STEM, it is everything, so.
So interesting, interestingly enough, the, the communication will be, is it full STEAM ahead?
Full STEM ahead.
It's full STEM ahead, it is actually. I was doing that for Anita. No, so you got right in the middle of this whole thing, Dr. Raich, so thank you.
It was a good conversation.
I didn't want to be a part of.
Yeah, exactly.
So, um, what, what is, or where would it be covered? One of the things that I, I didn't quite hear, but I'm hopeful and it's probably in there, is, uh, working in, uh, cultural awareness, global citizenship type things. Uh, and again, this is kind of like Montessori is in the back of my mind. That was a, a big piece, that with conflict resolution, which I think you've got tied into like social emotional stuff. Is that in there? Because I think that will help upstream tremendously with, with behavior issues and also learning and respect for one another.
Right, those concepts are, it will be integrated into the actual learning environment in the classroom. Frankly, I think it's kind of impossible not to integrate those kinds of things simply because of the, the students that are in the room. So, yeah, very much so. Um, it isn't necessarily the pri- like if you were to do like P Y P, uh, an I B program or a Montessori, there's a very specific thread. It's more of an integration.
Okay, okay, great. What about, uh, I, the, the schedule looks pretty good. For a three-year-old, for a five-year-old, is there enough time integrated for just free thinking, free works, uh, working on things? I, I know you guys have done your homework on it. I'm just curious, thinking of a three-year-old, there, where there's, yeah, there needs to be structure, but not killing him with structure and burning him out. So when they get to kindergarten, like, I don't like this school thing.
No, so this, basically the schedule is designed to provide some continuity, but within each of those learning blocks, the teacher designs what that experience is, needs to be based on the needs of their kids. So very much, I think we, you've heard the word play a lot. We don't like to give everyone the impression that kids just come to school and play, but the reality is, is young learners learn through play. They learn how to interact with each other. They learn real academic concepts through play. And so there is very much a, um, free think and free opportunity to engage and explore things in that environment at all, that both three and four. And you would see that in kindergarten, too.
Yeah, yeah, very good. I think I only have a couple of others. Uh, on the parent communication side of things, as far as, uh, report cards. I don't know if you've gotten that far i- in the process yet, uh, because it seems like you're moving at pretty lightning speed. And with April coming, uh, and integrating into next year's programming. I, I know where we are with, uh, first grade, second grade car, report cards and, and the, the language. I personally think there's a, a lot of edges speak in there that is a little confusing for parents. Are we doing a similar type of thing or are we going to have more of a, more of a, like a conversational type report card for, for kids?
So pre-K has...
And maybe not, maybe report card is the wrong word. I, I'm...
No, so we, we will report on progress in pre-K. Um, the idea for any report card, regardless of whether it's pre-K or early childhood, is that it's, it articulates a couple of things. One, it's related back to either the guideline it would be in pre-K or it's related to the standard, the TEACs. So that parents understand what they're, um, actually making progress in or not and that, um, and that they understand that they get, they, it communicates. I hear what you're saying specifically around trying to make sure that it doesn't have what we call edgespeak, so to speak, sort of like a, like academic language that people don't necessarily understand. Um, and it's finding that balance while also not, um, diluting it so much that parents don't actually know what the actual standard is. So, um, but we will review our, our reporting mechanisms, not only to some pre-K, but in the early childhood, we've already had discussions about that and consider adjustments. When we, when we actually did the primary grade ones, there were parents on the committee who reviewed it to give us their feedback. But we do get that feedback that you just described, um, sometimes from parents. And so we're in the process of looking at it right now. The other challenge, just so, since we're on this topic that I'll highlight is, you want to make sure that the, a report card or the reporting mechanism to parents doesn't cause the program to become so narrowed that the only focus happens is what's being reported on the report card.
Right.
Uh, and that's also the fine balance. Um, in primary grades, for example, there's so much more in kindergarten, first grade, than you can actually articulate in a report card. You're trying to hit what we call power standards. Um, and it's the same concept in any grade level in, in even younger grades. Like when kids are taking circle and we want to share with parents whether their kids are kindergarten ready, we want to make sure that it encompasses what their, what their readiness needs to look like, but that it's understandable. But it's not, we're not overly narrowing our focus to only concentrate on the things that are going to be assessed in that way. So yes to your answer, um, it's this fine balance, but the key for me, just speaking personally, is the feedback from parents who put their eyes on it. Tells whether they understand it or not.
Yeah.
And if the answer is no, then we have to make adjustments.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's absolutely fair. Uh, one thing that I think of for, from the, the child's perspective in those ages, anything that we can do to not give their parents or them or from their parents with this kind of progress monitor, any type of stigma, oh, I'm bad at this. At those ages, that could be detrimental for them going forward. Just to keep it a, yeah, this is pre-K, happy, fun, yeah, everybody's ultimately, the answer is you're doing, they're doing really well. Here's some, here's some extra areas that little Johnny or Suzie could focus on.
Well, I think the thing about the, the way we report out learning in the early grades is, um, it's, it's accumulative in nature. So say, for example, we report out to a parent what typically took place in the first six, I'm speaking of kindergarten, first six weeks. If you didn't master it, we're going to come back and tell you how they're doing in the second six weeks and the third. So you have an opportunity all year long to grow in that area because we're not going to, we leave you there. You just, we taught it in the first six weeks, we're never going to come back to it. There's that, and there's also the balance of making sure that we're honest because one of the things we want to make sure, and this is, we're how I feel about grades. I'm, I guess I'm speaking for myself a little bit here, but grades should communicate to students and parents where their level of mastery is.
Right.
And, um, a parent needs to know when their kids are progressing the way they should, and they also need to know when there's a problem so that they can collaborate with the school to help make that gap close, close that gap. So when we, when we, we, when we create a reporting mechanism for parents, it's really to help the parents understand where their child is compared to where they should be. And, um, so they can speak to it, but it's definitely not intended to be more than here's where your child is today. It's not supposed to articulate where we believe their strength is or where they can potentially grow in the future. And I think that's a really important point that happens between the conversation of, between the parent, the teacher and the student. Yeah.
Yeah, definitely. Final question, what type of flexibility of learning is designed into pre-K 3-4? When you have little Johnny that is great at their letters and numbers and they're ready to move on? And, and then there's some other that they, they're lost in the letter. So from a teacher's perspective, and that again, I'm thinking Montessori-esque, they've got all kids on all levels doing their own thing and they're all progressing appropriately. And of course, we've got TEACs and different standards. So how, how does that work for that teacher? How does that work for students? What's available for them?
Right, so in essence, what you're giving me a commercial for is my best practice, the best practices that we're implementing. And it really doesn't happen any different in pre-K than it does in the other grades. It's about differentiation. It's really about understanding and that's what the, that's the whole purpose of the screeners. Is it gives the teachers an opportunity to understand where kids are compared to where they should be. And then how do I leverage that information to help design instruction that's going to be interesting and meaningful to students, but also customized to them? So if you were to go into a pre-K classroom, you very much should see learning that is very much differentiated for kids. If you have kids that are already in the classroom who know their entire alphabet, we're not going to spend time teaching them their alphabet. We're going to build from that place forward. But if you have students that don't know any of their letter sound correspondence, then we're going to start there. So you would see very similar structures and expectations in terms of the implementation of best practice in pre-K like the other places. The instruction might look different just because the age group is different, but the practice is the same.
So just, I, I thought I, so just to make sure I get it, so i- in that class where some are really good at their letters and numbers and others aren't, as far as that differentiated, is that differentiated per student? Or is it for the classroom, well, we've really got to focus on these letters and numbers because a third or two-thirds don't know it? And I'm kind of leaning towards, you know, this progressing in a G T development and that type of thing, so.
No, our expectation is that, and this is where public education is really challenging, but the expectation is really that you try to customize as much for the kids as possible. Typically in a classroom, you usually have multiple students that are grouped in certain ways. You'll have, if you have a, you may have in any given classroom, a few students who can do certain things that are more advanced than like another group of their students. And you might have some kids that are a lot farther behind than another group. So a teacher may have three or four different types of groups, five groups, different types of groups going on. That's not uncommon, um, because what we don't do is we don't schedule kids and ability group them based on where they are with classroom teachers. Like we don't give one teacher a certain type of student and another teacher a different type of students. They're all mixed. And so it, it really should be individualized for every classroom, but you're, you're, you're articulating some of the biggest challenge of teaching. Because when you have a class of 22 kids, sometimes that spread in terms of skill set can be very broad and that was, that's where the challenge comes in. The great thing about pre-K is you have two people in there. So that's the nice thing is you can maximize the fact that you have two adults working with groups. You have basically a one to 11 ratio, student ratio. And we train our pair professionals, um, instructionally, just like we do teachers, so that pair professionals can be maximized in the classroom to deliver instruction to kids, um, with, with the teacher.
Right.
But it's, it is the challenge.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, very good. Thank you. I, I know I said it was my last question. I thought of another one. It's actually from Ms. Moss. And then I will release the floor. And it's basically, so what we're hopeful for is a positive response from, uh, T E A that they're going to be very receptive to this facility's utilization of these S R funds. What's the backup plan if, for whatever reason, I don't see it, but that they would say, no, that's not an appropriate use, we deny? What do we got?
Well, we have some funds left over from the 2014 bond. We also have some property that we're, uh, Mr. Horn and his team are working on getting sold. So those dollars would be our backup, either of those.
And, and Ms. Moss, also, we can supplant some of the S R funds
Yes.
that are geared for the facility improvement because supplanting is allowed.
Sure.
And free up local dollar to, um, to do the facility improvements. And just from T E A's perspective, I'm not sure they'll approve facilities in this way. It's, they're kind of taking case by case, which we appreciate to some extent and don't on another point. But at the end of the day, we have those options, but we also have the supplanting of these funds that can free up local dollar to do the improvements. That's our backup, yeah.
Very good.
Yeah, and those funds are already budgeted in S R 3, so.
Gotcha. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Raich. Uh, Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Mays. Um, I do have a couple of questions about, um, topics that were touched on in the presentation. Uh, it came up, the, the topic of true before and after-school care. Are we looking at providing some like wraparound care for parents who do need to drop off early or pick up late? Will they be plugged in with the typical options that are available at the, whatever elementary school they're at?
So that's our standard. Any provider has to be able to provide pre-K service. And we're trying to lift that across all elementaries. The challenge we have, the providers have, they all bid for it and we had a whole plan. They're struggling with staffing. And so we do anticipate that by next year, they'll, staffing will level out and they'll be able to actually support what they bid for. But, um, these organizations, you know, on Boys and Girls Club and others, they're struggling just like everybody else with staffing, so they can't really implement their program yet, even though the funding is there, uh, and all the structures there. Aaron Pedalis has done a great job. It's under his umbrella to manage after-school care at our elementary schools. Um, now we run into this problem, yeah.
And are those opportunities going to be added at sort of a, a paid option?
So it's a great question. So the whole proposal, the whole plan is so that we offer this for students, uh, no charge. And that again is a use of S R funding and things like that with specific programming that happens, right, uh, with these providers. So that's our, our first group will be, uh, for free. If the demand grows, then we'll have to adjust our budget because it may not be a demand at every elementary. But our intent is to have it, uh, no cost for the, for the families. Again, was supposed to start, I think, in November, October, November, uh, Dr. Hillen, right? Yeah, uh, once the bidding process and all that happened, and now they ran into staffing issues. Again, they anticipate, we anticipate that by August, uh, they'll be able to lift all the services up, yeah.
That's great because I know that cost is such a, a big issue. And, and I really think whatever the cost is, I mean, I know we're also sitting on a pretty healthy fund balance. And I know we've been reluctant to tap the fund balance for, for different opportunities. And it sounds like with the S R supplanting, we're going to be fine regardless of what happens with T E A. But I would just say that the, you know, whatever the cost is of this, within reason, I mean, this is a very modest cost. I'd be willing to spend quite a bit more on it just because we know that the payoff is going to be so big, long-term. And when you look at relatively what we spend our money on, I've always thought it was interesting as, as also the, the, the husband of a former preschool teacher, a, a child development major, how much we, we focus on the later years and how many opportunities and programs we build out for high school students and we're working our way down to junior high, but relatively speaking, and, and we're not unique in this, relatively how less, how much less we invest in the elementary preschool experience. And, and there's some things that, you know, obviously the resource need is different, right? So there's something that, that makes sense about that, but relatively speaking, I mean, the modest investments that we're talking about making are, are well within what I'm comfortable doing. Which leads me to the question of, you know, do we, have we, this is great and I'm glad we're rolling it out and it is such a big deal. And I'm not trying to downplay that in any way. I'm actually over eager here. Have we thought about what it would take to roll this type of, of universal access out for pre-K 3? And is that is something that's even on the radar?
We have actually had conversations, not necessarily for universal 3 pre-K, but we have had discussions about how do we really can, think about the whole continuum from zero to five.
Okay.
That's really the discussion we're trying to figure out and have is like, we know that there is a continuum of services that start from the moment you're born until the moment you hit kindergarten. And as a system, we want to be able to have that continuum in place in some way, and that's really what we're working on. And pre-K 3 is part of the equation, but it, it's not necessarily being elevated as something we want every three-year-old to be at school all day. There are some parents who may or may not choose that for their, their students. But we do want to make sure, one, that pre-K 3 is available here in Arlington and where there are opportunities to, um, have space for it and where we can actually grow, if there's interest, we would allow students and take students. We're not shutting pre-K 3 units down where there's space available for us to do it. We're just not, um, the priority first was for.
Yeah, and, and I think that the reason I ask is from a lo- you know, just from a long-term perspective. I do think that the need is there and we're going to see it, you know, based on the projected numbers that you have for pre-K 4. It's not like parents, you know, speaking as a, as a parent of a, of a student who's at the Wood pre-K 4 program, which we're extremely happy with. You know, talk all day long about how the teachers there are saints for, um, what my child puts them through. But, you know, that, that demand doesn't spring up at age four, right? Like there's a pre-existing need. And I think that's one thing that, you know, people have different opinions on the universality of pre-kindergarten. What we're really doing is extending public education, you know, down one more year, right? It's not like we're giving a handout. It's not like we're giving away a freebie. It's, it's public education. It's a year earlier. That need is there because I, I remember reading an article this week that, um, you know, the average cost to cost a country for childcare for one student, you know, over the course of a year is, is about $16,000. And so yes, we've had economically disadvantaged families that have benefited mainly from pre-K 4 over the years. And it's more limited at pre-K 3, but again, that need just doesn't arise because a kid turns four. There are families that are... There are families that are near, you know, economically disadvantaged, because that's a federal guideline thing, even up to middle-class families for which the burden of providing quality, not just childcare, but quality childcare, is a huge obstacle for them, and in some cases insurmountable. And so then, they would prefer their student to be, or their child to be in a quality environment that's providing them play-based education, but they can't afford it. And so, you know, they're maybe with a family member who's providing them, you know, some childcare, and the child is happy, but it's not necessarily the best place for them, even if the parent, if the parent had their way. And so I feel, you know, one of the things I'm proudest about this initiative is, by opening it up to everybody, and I hope the community takes advantage of it, is we are, you know, people talk about responding to parents and being a district of choice and providing that. We're really doing it here, because there are so many parents who, you know, choice doesn't necessarily mean that you have access to private providers. It means you have choice of finding quality educational opportunities for your kid. And it's, some families don't have that. And so now we're providing that to them, and we're relieving them of a huge economic burden. I could go on and on. I'm a huge fan of pre-K. I've had many conversations with Dr. Kavasas over the years, even when San Antonio partnered, they did their pre-K IV initiative, or universal pre-K initiative, you know, what can we do with that? And so I'm glad that we're finally here. I did want to sort of jump on the, the point that Dr. Raj brought up and that Ms. McMurro brought up earlier, and not to jump into, you know, whatever STEM STEAM, you know, discussion might go on. But because, because of, you know, my, my wife taught in NASEA accredited, you know, preschools, and play-based is like the, you know, sine qua non of that, and that is important to me. And I worry a little bit with the STEAM, I understand why we focus on that, that is sort of a buzzword, but to Ms. McMurro's point, I do think there are some parents out there that are going to want, you know, they want a play-based experience for them, and even their student, and even though we provide that, if we don't, if we message the STEM too hard, and the idea of it coming across as this rigorous experience, I think some of those parents are going to be like, well, I would like my kid to have a play-based experience. There are these private providers that purport to provide that, but AISD is not an option, because it seems like we're just, even though we're not, we're just pushing these standards down, and we're going to send them, and, you know, the kids are going to have to go through this day, and, you know, they're not going to have any independence, and I just want to make sure that that messaging doesn't come through.
Right.
And I think the STEAM messaging would massage that a little bit, and it, the arts is more of a, I think, takes away from that perception, and the fact that we do have such a strong reputation in the arts, it does extend that continuum down even further. And I know that's something we're trying to do from the high school level on down already. So if I had to vote in the, in the camp of STEM versus STEAM, I would say STEAM if I had to, to jump into that. But regardless of what messaging comes out of it, I hope that it is clear that this is a, a, a option that is holistic and ultimately play-based.
Right. I'm not saying anything.
You're neutral still, right?
I'm very neutral.
And that's, that's, that's all I have. And I'm so appreciative that we're finally here, and I think this, as Dr. Kavasas said, with no exaggeration, this is a big day in the district's history.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chapa. Once again, we've got our first and our second. I don't see any other discussions, so at this time, let's vote. All present vote in the affirmative. The motion passes. And if I could just add one more thing, just for the another silver lining, I'm not trying to overshadow your silver lining of COVID-19, but the silver lining of, this also opens up an opportunity for so many teachers to be in the classroom that they really want to be in. There's our half-full glass. Okay. Next on our agenda is our discussion action item for COVID-19 school operations update. Dr. Kavasas?
Thank you, President Mason. We bring, as we have been brought, every board meeting, an update on COVID-19, so Dr. Hill will take us through this brief update.
Following pre-K. I doubt it. Good evening. Board and superintendent, we'll get to the task at hand. The overview of the presentation, again, we'll look at, as a standard, the vaccine and testing mitigation strategies, followed by current county-wide conditions, which are consistent, consistent with what we're seeing, and our district dashboard, and our district weekly trends. And then we'll just talk about some COVID-19 campus support that the Office of School Leadership and others are providing for campuses. So, again, the mitigation efforts, we still are partnering with the Arlington Fire Department to provide the vaccine opportunity. We're continuing to make this information available at 2920 South Cooper. We've also partnered with Tarrant County Public Health and the VaxMobile to provide an, they did some studies about where the vaccine wasn't being as, it wasn't as widespread. And so they, in their research, has said that the East Arlington area around Anderson Elementary and Sam Houston High School was an opportunity where they wanted to provide vaccine opportunity, and so we partnered with them to allow that. And that, the communications department is working to get that information out to parents to take advantage of. The testing mitigation, again, our clinic at 1203 West Pineapple Parkway is still open five days a week, and you can see the times there. And we still have the Tarrant County Public Health site at the AISD Athletic Arena. That will continue to be open through the end of this month, and then we'll take a break and kind of, you know, reassess where we are and see what we need to do. And we'll probably do the same thing with the AISD clinic as well, because if, you'll see the data here in a minute, it kind of supports the need for testing is not at what it was at one point. So our testing center, and you can see the data here, these are the weeks ending on January 7, 15, 21, and 28. The blue line graph shows the number of tests administered that week. The red shows the number that were positive, and then the small green is a percent positive. And so you can see that's consistently going down with the number of tests that are administered. And so we are glad to see that, and it parallels with what's going on in the county as well. We continue to strongly encourage students and staff to wear the mask when they're in those conditions, and then those symptomatic individuals, we extend to stay home and get tested, and we, again, provide those testing opportunities. Just some county-wide conditions on the, on the statistics of the cases. Again, we're still in, community level is high, community spread is high. The seven-day average, as you can see, seven-day average of percent positive as of February 1st, that's going down. Virus spread is going down. COVID hospitalizations, that's going down. And again, the seven-day moving areas for COVID-like illnesses, all of those are continuing to go down. Again, still a high spread in the commi, in the community, but we're trending in the right direction, both in the county as well as here within the district. This is data from our dashboard for the district throughout, since we started tracking through February 2nd. You can see the total of 9,864 positive cases within the district, and you can see it broke out by the number of staff, the number of students, and the number of visitors. Again, we try to get this updated by every day at 5:00 PM on the dashboard. There's a little lag in that, because when we were really at that peak a couple of weeks ago, our staff was really challenged trying to get that in, and so there were some delays in that. Here are the trends, here's a good visual to show you where the, our dashboard is showing. And again, this goes back from November 15th, where we were very low, all the way up to the peak during the January, early in middle January and late, and then where we are at February 4th, last Friday. Again, some of these weeks are showing only three days of reporting, because we weren't in school for full weeks, three or four days. We'll move into now the COVID support, the workforce support. Again, our HR is still working to diligently find and secure substitute teachers. We're using campus staff, the principals are assigning campus staff to fill in when classroom teachers are absent for various reasons, whatever campus staff, that may be the IC, interventionist testing facilitators, or others. And we're also using the central office helping hands. We have increased that from two times a week to four times a week out on the campuses, serving as substitute teachers. And again, the Office of School Leadership is managing that with the principal's collaboration. We talked last time about a January pause, and we've extended that actually to include a February pause, where we'll pause or adjust the following practices, and I won't read them for you. But through the month of February, with an understanding that we'll resume portions of those that worked in March. But these are the things that are actually on pause right now with regard to additional expectations for teachers and staff every day. Along with that pause, by extending the pause, we're hoping that this provide the opportunity for teachers to really focus on instructional priorities and accelerate student learning. Again, focusing on those best practices, purposeful planning in the PLCs, and then the acceleration of House Bill 45 implementation, which is that requirement, so. We will continue to monitor and adjust these plans as necessary for both the operational piece of the health services, as well as what's going on in the classroom for coverage. With that being said, we'll take any questions that we may need to, that you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. Do we have any questions, comments for Dr. Hill? Yes, Mrs. McMurro?
Thank you, Dr. Hill. I had a quick question. I know it's been a while since we last had a school operations update, and part of that is because of the snowstorm and deferred meeting, but what is the current wait time for our employees who are getting tested through our district's testing center? Is that, is there still kind of a backlog?
We are moving them in and out now, because, again, the, the, the need is not as what it was is at one point, and so there's, there's not been a wait the times that I've checked, and we haven't been, gotten any reports of any waits, so.
And we have the additional testing at the?
We do.
At the athletics complex. Go ahead.
We do. We have the additional testing at the athletic complex with the, with the, with the county, and that, again, that's available seven days a week, six or seven days a week, and so there's plenty of test, plenty of testing opportunities, and we haven't seen of any.
The demand has gone down.
Yep.
That's great news. That's really good to hear. I just wanted to ask that and reiterate my appreciation for the pause and the central office helping hands. I think increasing that from two to four days a week has been absolutely essential. And I was dropping my son off to school a couple of weeks ago, and I was in the doorway when the principal, Beth Ann Woodard, she had a whole list of teachers that were out that day. And shout out to Deanne Thompson from Central Office, she came and she, she was early, and she had her gear ready, and she said, where am I teaching today? Give me whatever, put me wherever you need. And that was just, that really stuck with me. That's the kind of district we are. That's the kind of district we strive to be. And right now, you know, that was just an example of how our central office staff is, they're repurposing themselves. And, you know, it means a lot to teachers. I know that it means a lot to students. We're putting highly qualified people in front of our kids, and especially when there is a lack of subs picking up jobs, and we're spread so thin, I just think that, you know, that's so essential, and it's, it's going very far. So I appreciate everyone, administrators, central office staff, you, Dr. Kavasas, thank you for implementing and extending that central office helping hands. That's really important.
Thank you, Ms. McMurro. Well said. Any other comments, questions from trustees? Okay, I don't see any. Thank you again, Dr. Hill.
Thank you.
So next on our agenda, we will address our consent agenda items, which consist of routine items grouped together for approval as one unit. Unless removed from the consent agenda, these items will be acted on at one time with no discussion. So trustees, are there any requests for items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda for further discussion? I see none. So is there a motion to accept the agenda?
Motion?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. So I have a motion from Ms. McMurro, a second from Mr. Hogg. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. All present vote in the affirmative. Motion passes. Next, we move to our discussion item. Dr. Kavasas?
Thank you, President Mason. This evening, we bring House Bill III and District Improvement Plan progress as our board monitoring time. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Raj.
All right. Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Kavasas, I'm going to provide an update for our House Bill III DIP progress. And specifically tonight, I'll be sharing data regarding the results of the EOC retest that took place earlier this school year. So the End of Course STAR, which we call the EOC, is required for graduation, and it takes, we provide assessments, or we assess students in Algebra I, English I and II, Biology, and US History. And in order to graduate, students must pass a minimum of three of those five exams, which makes them eligible for the IGC committee to me to decide what interventions need to be put in place in order for them to actually meet graduation requirements. These assessments are summative in nature. They're intended to measure a student's mastery of the content that was taught during that course, and they are designed to promote college readiness, or at least measure the college readiness of students connected to the specific content that they took. When students take the assessment, they do so in a four-hour window for Algebra I, Biology, and US History, and then English I and II, there's a five-hour window, and the reading and writing is combined. You've heard us a lot talking this year a little bit about the redesign for STAR assessments. This has always been the case in English I and II, there's always been open-ended responses there. Tests are administered three times annually, and if there's a junior high student that takes a high school course, specifically Algebra I or Biology, they do participate in the EOC, and they can actually get that out of the way in their junior high years. Most of the students that I'm, most of the data that I'm going to talk about tonight are retesters, so students who are being, are testing again. They either weren't successful the first time, and there's another opportunity for them to be, to test again, to try to meet their graduation requirement. So it's important to note that the population that I'm sharing with you tonight does not really reflect, reflect the broad sample that we typically report out when we're talking about House Bill III or DIP goals. This population subset is very small comparison. Students that are reported out, or reported as either having tested, absent, or other, and if they miss the exam for any reason, then they're automatically identified for intervention, because as I mentioned earlier, this is a requirement they will have to pass in order to graduate. I thought this quote by Carol Ann Tomlinson, which is a famous person in terms of curriculum design, said, "Assessment is today's means of modifying tomorrow's instruction." It really gets down to this idea that the whole point of an assessment is try to understand where you are in the pathway towards learning, so that you can customize kids' learning. EOCs are not really that different. If you have a student that masters or passes the EOC, it lets you know they have met minimum expectations for graduation. If they don't pass the EOC, it gives us more insight into where their learning progress is, and what adjustments or interventions we need to put in place, so they can actually meet that expectation. So what you're going to see for each of the sub, each of the tests connected to the, to the content areas is two slides, one that looks like this, which will basically articulate what the passing rates have been, and the number of students tested and/or absent for three years. The reason we're showing you three years is so you can get a sense about what it looks typically like, because these passing results are typically less than what you would normally see. So I mentioned that, so there's not necessarily an alarmed reaction when you think about the low number of kids that necessarily pass, and the reason being is, as I mentioned, these are students who have already either didn't pass previously, or they're taking it again. And the number of students that take the exam are a lot less. You're also going to notice, and I would like to highlight, 2020, the number of students that were tested dipped a lot. And that's because, as you'll notice, our participation rates for STAR last year were very low in comparison. We had about a 10% gap compared to what other, like, as, what we typically have in terms of participation. So if you chose not to participate in the exam last year, you still have to take the exam, because it's a requirement for graduation, so those kids are now part of the retest group. So you're going to notice a big spike in 2021, because many students who weren't assessed in 2020 must be assessed in 2021. So you can, on the graphs below, you'll notice this big U, and you're going to see that pretty much in every content area. 2019 was our typical year. We had the big drop in 2020, and then 2021, it goes back up to a little bit of normal. And then the trend line that you see on the passing rates kind of shows you how that dip kind of occurred. So I'm just going to kind of go through these and let you see where we are. The line that you'll want to focus on in each of these for this school year is the very bottom line, which is 2021. You can see that our participation rate, we had this year for Algebra I, 74 of those students absent, so 1,482 participated in the assessment, and of that, of that 1,482 students, 430 passed. This is a breakdown of the passing percentages by subgroup. And by the way, these, these passing rates will be unfolded into the larger STAR passing rate. rates that we'll report back out into June because they'll be included in accountability. Here's Biology. We had nine hundred and seventy-two students this year participate in the Biology exam, and three hundred and seventeen students passed. Very similar to what we typically had even before covid. This is the breakdown. English One. We had sixteen hundred and three students pa, I'm sorry, three, sixteen hundred and three students that were going to be tested, seventy-four absent, so a total of sixteen seventy-nine, and of those students, three hundred and seventy-five passed. And English Two. Thirteen hundred and seventy-four students, three hundred and fifty passed. Here's a breakdown by subgroup. And then finally, U S History. Six hundred and thirty-nine students were eligible for testing, forty of them were absent, and of the six hundred and seventy-nine students, total three hundred and thirty-one of them passed. So that's our E O C results. As I mentioned earlier, these students, if they did not pass this round, they'll have another opportunity coming in the spring, and of course, interventions are put in place in the campus to help them actually pass the exam. And then all the passing rates will be unfolded into the report that we'll share out with you in June, which will share the bigger picture because, like I mentioned, this is a very small subset. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. Do we have any trustees with questions? Dr. Raish?
Thank you, President Mays. I was just curious, Dr. Wertz, and maybe you said this and I didn't hear it, on the the vast majority of these from twenty-twenty to twenty-one, it's gone down as far as the results, the the pass rates, so.
Well, it's not really the pass rates, it's the population sizes are different. So if you look in twenty-twenty, the number of kids that participated in twenty-twenty, for example, were a lot smaller, and so the percentages of those that pass might be higher, but you don't have the full population there. Is that what you're referring to?
Well, I guess that that makes sense. Well, I was just, yeah, like with the graph that's that's up there now on the right, I was looking at the sixty-five percent versus the fifty-two percent in twenty-one.
Right.
So.
I really think the population size is the denominator versus the numerator is what's actually generating that result. Because what our typical rates, which is why we wanted to show you the three-year trend, is is what you see really in two thousand nineteen is a closer idea of where we typically land.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Thank you. That that's all I had. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Raish. Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, Dr. Wertz, for the presentation, and my question is, trying to put this in context, how does this, for this small subset, how does this compare with our peers? And the second follow-up question would be, what, you know, once they go through the interventions, what percentage actually do pass?
Yeah, I I wouldn't be able to answer. I can get you that information. I don't really know what our results look like from the last retest to what's happened with our peer groups. I haven't pulled that data. In terms of like what the passing rates are, you mean if they failed this round or they come back again, I'd have to pull that too. I don't, I don't have that answer off the top of my head.
But eventually, a majority of them do because we
Well, yeah.
Pretty high passing, graduation rates.
That's right.
Right, so.
They they will have have to have passed at least three. And there are, we have, and this is really off the top of my head, but we have somewhere between three to five hundred students a year that go through the I G C process across the district. And so if you're not in the I G C process, then you are, you have passed all five of your exams. If you've even failed one of them, you go through the I G C process. You just can't be eligible for that process unless you pass at least three. So most students, because as you see, our graduation rates are high, get through these eventually, but there are some that struggle doing it. And the challenge that it happens is, and I'll use Algebra as an example, if you fail the Algebra One assessment, but you've passed the course, and you move on to the next course, the farther you get away from that content, the more challenging it becomes. And so what happens is, that's really where House Bill forty-five, forty-five kind of helps out in this scenario because it, the requirement is if you failed any portions of the STAR exam, you're now in thirty hours of tutoring, and so that that mandate kind of helps in terms of the structure. And we are monitoring the student groups to see, are they actually making progress? So, but that is the challenge, you know? As they get older, the test becomes farther and farther away, so the idea is to help them pass as soon as possible.
So, and I know we struggled for years. What I'd be curious is, you went back to twenty-nineteen, but longitudinally, you know, were there any? I'd be curious to look at it a little further back to see how the long-term
Okay.
Trend has been, and then why it's been so, if it's been stagnant for a long time, why? So.
Yeah. I mean, I can pull that for you.
That'd be great. I I mean, I could probably pull too, but if you guys have it handy, that would be interesting to see. And then my next question was, you brought up forty-five, forty-five and the high dosage tutoring that it provides. How are we on staffing for that tutoring?
We actually had a report on it this morning, and it's going, it's actually going really well. So we've been able to track, they're tracking the students, they, we are attaching them either to a a teacher that's in the building and or someone from outside the building that's working, and we've contracted with also vendors that are providing tutoring. So it's actually been, it's actually going pretty well.
So we're able to meet the requirements staffing-wise
Yeah, so.
Without many gaps?
I I don't have to look across the whole system to see where that is of Dr. Buehl's leading that process, to see which which parts of it actually have the gaps, but in terms of the structure and the system and the principal's management of it, it's happening. Yeah, it's actually gone pretty well, to be honest.
Great, great.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. I don't see any other questions or comments, so thank you, Dr. Wertz, for your presentation. Okay, next on our agenda is our open forum for non-agenda items. Mrs. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding non-agenda items? Okay, we will move on to our superintendent's report. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays, and just to share some information about our district, and this will have, beginning part will have an emphasis on sports, just a preview here, but as you know, the Super Bowl is always a big event, and it's really big also for Arlington I S D, and you're probably wondering, well, how is that possible, right? Well, that's because two players on the Rams roster are Arlington I S D products. Bobby Brown, who played at Lamar High School, is a rookie defensive lineman for the Rams, and Justin Hollins, who played at Martin High School, is a linebacker in his second season with the team. You see their pictures there? And if that wasn't enough football, can never be enough football. In the Pro Bowl on Sunday, Miles Garrett scored a touchdown, and he also played at Martin High School before becoming the number-one draft pick in the NFL that year. So just congratulations to them. As we talk about sports, I'd like to congratulate the forty-four students who signed, athletes who signed with colleges last week as part of our annual National Signing Day. You see some examples there. While there are the ones moving on to the next level after earning nearly two million dollars in scholarship. That was a great event, and they were joined by their teachers, their coaches, the family members. Also like to thank former Dallas Cowboys lineman Joe Looney for his speech and his motivation, his enthusiasm. Joe Looney is always on, and he he did great. So our district is blessed to have partners like the Dallas Cowboys and Joe Looney to make that appearance possible for our students. All right, if that wasn't enough sports, I've got a little bit more. This time, it's involving the Olympics. So if you like the Olympics, pay close attention to the U S bobsledding team this week. If the name Sylvia Hoffman sounds familiar, it should because she's a Bowie High School graduate, where she played basketball, she went on to the L S, to LSU, and then picked up bobsledding. You see her picture there. This this week, she'll be making her Olympic debut, and congratulations to her for that outstanding, outstanding achievement. Move on from sports.
Oh.
I know. Congratulations are in order to Martin High School junior Ella Tran for recently competing in the Collin County Young Artist Competition for her piano playing. She's an outstanding example of our fine arts students in the district. In addition to playing the piano, she's first chair violin at Martin High School, and like many other fine arts students, she takes classes at her Center for Visual and Performing Arts. Congratulations to Ella. Hope you all are enjoying the Chinese New Year, which began last Tuesday and concludes Friday. This year marks the Year of the Tiger, and schools throughout the district celebrated the New Year. That included Wimbush World Language Academy, which decorated, you can see on the screen, with paper dragons and red and yellow lanterns. We want to thank specifically the members of the U T Arlington Chinese Club who came out and helped in this celebration and partnered with Wimbush World Language Academy. So thank you to them, and congratulations to Wimbush for their continued effort. Also, this this last, I guess it was yesterday, if it's going to come up, it is. Okay? So yesterday, we had the opportunity to attend the Crow Leadership Academy I B Authorization Approval and the notification. So Crow Leadership Academy has been authorized as an I B elementary school. And you see the the celebration, parts of the celebration that were taking place there. We had balloons, confetti, and all cake, et cetera. A special thank you to all the staff. This was a journey because I B Authorization is not easy to achieve at any level, but certainly not easy to achieve at an elementary school where it has to be the entire school, not just a section of the school. So congratulations to Liznell, the principal there, Jamie McDougall, who came before her, and all our central office staff and teachers that worked on that application and and making that a reality. So we have our first I B elementary school, and it's just one of a handful of schools that exist in terms of I B authorized throughout the state. So congratulations to Crow Leadership Academy, and and look forward to much success there. That concludes my report.
Wow, and a shout-out to Spence. He really did get everybody in that picture.
He did.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Do I have any school board reports? No? Okay, so I'd like to give a couple of reports. This week is National Counselors Week, the week of February the seventh through the eleventh, so thank you to all of our counselors for the impact that you are making on our students and the success for our students. Take some time out this week to say thank you to our counselors in our schools. And once again, counselors, thank you very much for the impact that you do make on our students on a daily basis. Also, this is Black History Month. This year for twenty-twenty-two, the national theme for Black History Month is Black Health and Wellness. And one thing that I do have to say about covid nineteen, the pandemic, is one thing, one of the many things it did was definitely bring additional awareness to the wide spirit of disparities of the access to quality health care and how that does definitely negatively impact outcomes, particularly of people of color. So many schools will be having Black History programs, so please look at our website and see and join and help celebrate Black History Month. With that being said, I would like to say Coach Willie Chris, who's the father of our Sam Houston coach, Chris, passed away Sunday at the age of eighty-six. He definitely dedicated his life to education, particularly through coaching, five decades of coaching in North Texas, and he retired from Fort Worth I S D. He entered Fort Worth I S D when they had just begun allowing black and white students to attend the same schools. His legacy, from what I know, is inspiring so many others and paving the way for so many people that came after him. One thing that I can say I have experienced as African-American is when you are around others still living that have endured so many hardships to get to the positions that they are in, and they still take the time to reach back and pull up others to follow and be that example for them to be able to succeed based on the past that they have created. To me, that's legendary. And so with that being said, it's also worthy of recognizing our Coach Chris during this month of Black History Month. So prayers out to Coach Chris and his family and our Sam Houston family. And that's all I have. Ms. Secretary, do we have any items?
Madam President, we do. Mr. Will Banks was asking Dr. Wertz if he could gather data earlier than twenty-nineteen to look at the percentage of passing. What, four or five years before that?
Yep. Thank you, Ms. Secretary. So it is now nine twenty-two, and this meeting is adjourned.